Good evening and welcome to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting. Thank you for being here tonight. We're happy to have you. I will call this meeting to order. If we would, let's move forward with roll call.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to excuse Commissioner Lauren White.
Second it.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Cast your vote, please. Okay. Are we good with roll call on that as well?
Yes.
Okay. All right, if you would stand with me and we'll have Commissioner Ward do our invocation.
Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for our blessings and we ask for your guidance tonight as we are making decisions that will affect the county and the people in it. Amen.
Thank you. If you would remain standing, we're gonna have Summer Reddick with South Central come to the podium and introduce yourself and lead us in the pledge.
Good evening. My name is Cadet Sergeant Major Reddick. I'm in 10th grade and I currently attend South Central High School. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, may be seated.
Thank you, Ms. Reddick. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Cast your vote, please. Okay. Agenda is approved. We will move forward with the public addresses to the board and we have Mayor John Moore.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank for the opportunity to be here tonight. I bring you greetings from the Pitt County Mayor's Association.
Mayor, let me stop you one second so the attorney can read his little piece that he needs to read before you get started.
Give me a microphone like giving Jesse James train schedules.
Thank you, Mayor.
Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. The table of 30 minutes is set aside for public addresses to the board. Please state your name and address prior to speaking.
Okay.
Okay, we're ready, Mayor.
Okay, my name's John Moore. I reside at 4418 Philip Court in Farmville. I bring you greetings from the Pitt County Mayor's Association. My request tonight is very simple. We're asking for a position on the agenda in your February meeting. On February the 19th, we're asking to be here so that we may bring our concerns as a group, news, questions, concerns, and accolades, something I'm sure y'all don't get very many of, but we'd like to bring those also. We have a new agenda, a new direction. We have a three-year plan that we'd like to share with the county board as we move forward. We will be meeting in April. We'll also meet in August and November, and I thank you for this time and hope that you'll find a place on the agenda for us in November. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. I was gonna recognize you, but you already had a, were gonna talk with us, but I'll also recognize the Mayor of Bethel, I saw Mayor Wilson. Where did I see him at? Right here. Thank you for being with us tonight. Okay, we will move forward with presentations. Janice, I'll turn that over to you. We've got two.
Yes, if we'll go down front while we're going, if the board would approve the resolutions for the Chair and Vice Chair.
Motion and a second. Got a motion and a second.
We'll head down front and I'll be Mary Perkins-Williams first and then we'll call Commissioner Nunneley. Mr. Chairman, if you'll allow, I'll read this resolution of appreciation prepared by the board as we do at the second meeting in December every year. It is tradition to honor the outgoing Chair and Vice Chair and recognize them for their year of service in that leadership role. So this resolution is titled Office of Pitt County Board of Commissioners: Resolution of Appreciation Honoring Mary Perkins-Williams as Chairwoman. It reads: Whereas Mary Perkins-Williams has served faithfully and honorably as Chairwoman of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners from December 2022 to December 2023; and whereas Mary Perkins-Williams has provided the Board of Commissioners with steadfast leadership and commitment as Chairwoman; and whereas Chairwoman Perkins-Williams hosted the first Regional Economic Development Summit where colleagues from the 29 county eastern regions gathered to discuss economic development; and whereas, under Chairwoman Perkins-Williams' leadership, Pitt County launched the first-ever Litter-Free-for-U-and-Me campaign to address widespread littering and illegal trash dumping in Pitt County; and whereas, under Chairwoman Perkins-Williams' tenure, she oversaw the facilitation of the Sheriff's Administration Building, the Twin Community Centers, and the courthouse renovations; and whereas Chairwoman Perkins-Williams was instrumental in selecting the office park location for one of the community centers and led efforts to develop a recreation site plan to incorporate outdoor recreation and education opportunities adjacent to the center; and whereas Chairwoman Perkins-Williams led the board and provided direction on the American Rescue Plan Fund Act allocations and the expenditures of opioid funds; and whereas Chairwoman Perkins-Williams led the board and provided direction on the, I'm sorry, was awarded, during Chairwoman Perkins-Williams' tenure, Pitt County was awarded two great grants to expand broadband throughout Pitt County; and whereas during her tenure, Pitt County transitioned recycling services in the county to support innovation and sustainability; and whereas during her tenure, Pitt County celebrated achievements in economic development, including the expansion of Minji's Bottling Group and CMI Plastics, as well as receiving 1.5 million in Golden Leaf Funds and 300,000 in NC Commerce Utility Funds to support a waterline expansion; and whereas during her tenure, the county authorized an upgrade to the 700 megahertz radio system; and during her tenure, the state enacted Medicaid expansion, providing coverage to uninsured Pitt County residents; and under her leadership, the board timely adopted a $367 million balanced budget with the highest cost of living increase for Pitt County employees ever provided; and whereas, under her leadership, the Board of Commissioners approved the relocation of the Board of Elections office; and during her tenure, she was also an integral part of Pitt County government by serving on various boards and commissions, such as the Convention and Visitors Authority, Pitt Community College Board of Trustees, Trillium Health Resources' Central Region Advisory Board, the Human Relations Commission, and Social Services Board. Now therefore be it resolved, the members of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners commend Mary Perkins-Williams for her efficient leadership and outstanding service as Chairwoman to the Board of Commissioners for the calendar year 2023. If Mr. Chairman, you would present this.
Thank you for your service, Commissioner. Let's give her a hand. You wanna say a few words?
I didn't know I did all of this. But now I know tonight while I'm tired. It was a pleasure. Grab such a great staff to work with and just wonderful people here in Pitt County. Thank you so much for this tribute.
Thank you.
You wanna turn it around and do a picture? My cords. Thank you. Vice Chair Nunneley. Okay, it is my next pleasure to present a resolution of appreciation honoring Chris Nunneley as Vice Chair. And although this is, he is the first Commissioner to serve two terms as Vice Chair, this reflects just his efforts of his first year or some of the efforts within his first year of service. And it reads: Resolution of Appreciation Honoring Chris Nunneley as Vice Chairman. And it reads: Whereas Chris Nunneley has served faithfully and honorably as Vice Chairman of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners from December 2022 to December 2023; and whereas Chris Nunneley has provided the Board of Commissioners with steadfast leadership and commitment as Vice Chairman; and whereas, under Vice Chairman Nunneley's tenure, he oversaw the facilitation of the Sheriff's Administration Building, the Twin Community Centers, and the courthouse renovations; and whereas Vice Chairman Nunneley led the board and provided direction on American Rescue Funds allocations and expenditures of opioid funds; and whereas during his tenure, Pitt County was awarded two great grants to expand broadband throughout Pitt County; and whereas during his tenure, Pitt County transitioned recycling services in the county to support innovation and sustainability; and during Vice Chairman's tenure, Pitt County celebrated achievements in economic development, including the expansion of Minji's Bottling Group and CMI Plastics, as well as receiving 1.5 million dollars in Golden Leaf Funds and 300,000 dollars in North Carolina Commerce Utility Funds to support waterline expansion; and whereas during Vice Chairman Nunneley's tenure, the county authorized an upgrade to the 700 megahertz radio system; and during his tenure, the state enacted Medicaid expansion, providing coverage to uninsured Pitt County residents; and during his tenure, Vice Chairman was an integral part of Pitt County government by serving on various boards and commissions, including the Pitt Greenville Airport Authority and the Mideast Commission. Now therefore be it resolved, the members of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners commend Chris Nunneley for his efficient leadership and outstanding service as Vice Chairman of the Board of Commissioners for the calendar year 2023.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner, thank you for your service. I think so.
Yes. Thanks. Thank you. That is all that we have this evening. Our, I'll wait till we get back up. The next presentation on your agenda was to recognize our Employee of the Month for the month of December, Jason George with Management Information Services. Due to a family emergency, he was not able to be here this evening, but he will join us, I hope, in January where we can recognize both him and the January recipient.
Okay, outstanding. We will move on to public hearings, the Glenda Brawley Conditional District rezoning. I'll ask Eric to come up. James is up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, we have one rezoning request tonight. And remember, just like with solar farms, the sand mines, one of which you'll be dealing with tonight, is no longer a special use permit. It is a conditional district rezoning. So that gives you a lot more flexibility, a lot more authority in putting conditions, and you'll hear some about the conditions that are already on this particular one that have been agreed upon by the petitioner, but just know you've got broad discretion on this tonight. So with that, I'll go through the staff report quickly. This particular site is about 40 acres in size and is currently zoned as rural agricultural, but again, this conditional district rezoning, it follows the same process if we were going from another zoning category to a separate one. So in turn, this follows your standard operating procedures for rezonings, and this, of course, is exclusively for the operation of a sandmine. Just to orient you a bit as to the location, it is east of the city of Greenville, just south of 264, pretty much between Greenville and Pactolus off of Old Pactolus Road. And this is actually the parcel that we're talking about. Old Pactolus Road actually bisects it. You can see a portion on the northern side and then the remainder on the southern side of the roadway. These are also our categories. Those colors indicate categories within our land use plan, commercial up here off 264 in red. The dark green usually corresponds with some type of environmental concern, primarily flood-prone areas. And all this area that we're contending with on this property is within the 100-year floodplain. City of Greenville's, city limits are fairly close by where Bradford Creek is located. That particular golf course and the residential component is within the city of Greenville. The actual land use category is open space and conservation, and again, corresponds with certain areas of our county that have particular constraints. In this case, 100-year floodplain's already been mentioned. It could be wetlands, could be a number of other things. So the primary uses, not really looking for intensive-type land uses here, usually include timber, agricultural activities, and some other limited-type operations. Primarily shown in flood-prone areas, might have conservation easements or parks. Different uses, we've run through, and any type of utility access is typically fairly limited. In this particular area, there is some water service, and of course, your sanitary sewer would be on individual septic systems. You may recall, we adopted a brand-new update to our land use plan last year. We dealt with these conditional district items, and one of the things that was proposed as a policy was, since we have a very large geographic area, is looking at making sure any new land uses that are proposed blend in carefully and to the community where it's going, and also takes into consideration any other issues that are nearby. So this is, this particular policy acknowledges that this board, through these conditional districts, can add additional conditions, might be additional separation, hours of operation, those sorts of things. Again, from the existing land uses on site in this area, primarily undeveloped agricultural-type operations. Just next door to the west is an area that's already been excavated for sand. Another area that's actively being mined is just north of 264. The area in green below, and I believe you've had some contact from individuals there, are some RV parks, and that would be just along the southern boundary here. But primarily in and around there, except for these brown areas that are affiliated with some type of cell tower, primarily these are undeveloped areas with a sprinkling of residential in the gold colors. And here's your zoning map, and again, we've already indicated this is in rural agricultural, the dark green. And again, this is, the request tonight is to go to rural agricultural conditional district. And the primary uses here, as we've mentioned, very low intensity, primarily agriculture and some other accepted uses. The conditional zoning district, in this case, is specifically for a sandmine. So again, if you approve this tonight, that's the only use that would be allowed. There are existing conditions already within the zoning ordinance, the 100-foot use separation. You'll see that on the map in just a minute. Hours of operation only are involved when there's blasting. With sandmines, that's not the case typically. So in turn, the petitioner has already advised that he will limit the hours of operation from 7:00 A.M. to 7:00 P. And I'll run through those other conditions in a minute. There are screening requirements, and of course, the state must also issue a mining permit. So, a little bit of the details here for the actual 40-acre tract, that's your permit boundary we're looking at. And as I've mentioned, there's 100-foot separation around all the boundary, all the property lines. So the area bounded in the blue would be the excavation area. You can see three separate areas, on the north side of the road, then two on the southern part. There's some existing vegetation that will assist with the screening that's required. And also, the reason the area on the southern side is in two segments, there's a riparian buffer that has to remain undisturbed there. Here's additional proposed 10-foot screening berms around the remainder of the site, including on the southern end where that RV park is located. So with this, planning staff has reviewed it, along with some of the additional conditions, and we do see that it is consistent with our land use plan and is reasonable and in the public's interest. There are existing other sandmines in close proximity. Screening buffering is also provided for. Planning Board reviewed it likewise. It was a split vote, but did recommend approval by a vote of five to three. So with that, tonight, we do have our proposals as far as a consistency statement and also recommending for approval with certain conditions. Certainly, a zoning compliance permit would be required, floodplain development permits, since all this is located within the floodplain. The operating permit from the state is required. 50-foot riparian buffers must remain intact. Hours of operations, that has been agreed to by the petitioner, again, 7:00 A.M. to 7:00 P. There's electrical easement that's required and also a requirement by NC DOT. So with that, Mr. Chair, we're ready for the public hearing.
Okay, we will open up the public hearing, and Madam Manager, I think we have several signed up to speak.
We do. The first one signed up to speak is Kurt Kraft.
Good evening, Commissioners. I came here to just voice my opinion. We've been in this park for about over, I guess, two years, two and a half years, and Whispering Oaks is the park that we live in. My wife is a schoolteacher here in Pitt County. I'm the head track and field coach at East Carolina University. Been here 20 years. When we were looking for a place to live, we were looking for someplace peaceful, someplace quiet, someplace that you could, you know, enjoy that. And we found Whispering Oaks to be that place. So we've lived there for two and a half years and enjoy it thoroughly. So I guess I'm just here to, you know, I don't know enough about the details, way above my pay grade, but I heard this gentleman talk about the things that he had put up here. But just a couple of things that would come to my mind are, you know, traffic, you know, on that road. I know nothing about that. Again, that's above my pay grade. Another thing that comes to mind is noise. I know we talked about 7:00 A.M. to 7:00 P. You know, I know nothing about, you know, what kind of, you know, noise pollution is gonna be out there, especially when we have to get up early in the morning. The owner of the park, Wayne, takes a lot of pride in this park. Him and his wife have put a lot of financial support into the thing. So the word pride is the first thing that I think of that comes to mind, that they've done there. They've done a lot of upkeep and they've done a lot of upgrades since they've been there. So with the time and the effort that these two have put in there, and along with the fact that my wife and I really enjoy living there, I don't know what that's gonna turn into. So I just wanted to come here on behalf of Wayne and his wife. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kraft.
Next up is Wayne Mayhew.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. I own the park. My wife and I own the park together. Very proud of it. We bought it two years ago. We come from a substantial background in hospitality. We take it very, very seriously. Since we bought the park, I've invested well over $140,000 in improvements in substructures to grow the park. Since we've taken over the park, we've seen a 44% increase in revenue year over year. It's a beautiful, beautiful resort park. I can't begin to tell you how proud we are of it. Our good customers like Mr. Kraft, we have many guests like that that stay at our park. We have traveling nurses. We have professionals. And it's like a little slice of heaven, frankly. I think when the planning board put together the proposal, one of the things they overlooked is, we have between my park and the Mannings Park, anywhere from 100 to 150 people every night living at the park. Right now, as we speak, people are setting up their barbecues, having dinner. It's their backyard. It's where they live right now. If I have time, I'd like to read an email from Kelly Powers who founded the park. On behalf of Ms. Powers, my name is Kelly Powers. In 2004, my husband and I started Whispering Oaks RV Resort. We chose a property at 2773 Sunnyside Road. It was ideal location. We started with three campsites and eventually grew to 14. Our neighbors and residents of the area understand the amount of work we put into the park and how much we cared. The current owners are staying in the vision that we set in place, and majority of campers, traveling nurses, professionals deserve the right to get a good night's sleep there. I appeal to your, I appeal to your, I appeal to you to please consider the needs of the business owners and their patrons. I could ramble all night. We're very proud of the park. If you have any questions for me, I'd love to field some questions. I hope you vote no to protect the park and protect Mannings and protect the good people that live there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayhew.
Mrs. Edna?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I just want to wish you, you, all of you, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, ma'am. Merry Christmas to you.
Is it Kenny Deans? And I apologize if I'm not reading that right. I know it starts with a K and D. Yes, thank you. Kenny Deans.
Thank you. I've lived in the neighborhood since 1985. Several years ago, we had somewhat of a mining operation. Noise, beep beep bang bang, tailgate slamming. The road got so destroyed, you could run probably 35 mile an hour down the road and it would beat you to death. Dump trucks caused serious problems. They're noisy. This banging, ringing bells and things. We just have, we've got a quiet neighborhood. I'd like for you guys to vote to keep it that way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Deans.
The last person I have signed up is Walter Pollard.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Walter Pollard. My address is 5169 Old Pactolus Road in Greenville. My property is right beside this land mine proposal. My well is 72 feet to the property line adjoining this property that y'all, that's in question tonight. I have an excerpt from Brunswick County Sand Mine Operation, May 12, 2021, wanted to rezone for mining. A statement from the North Carolina Department of Environmental and National Resources, there are at least three groundwater wells in the immediate area. The University of North Carolina Institute for the Environmental noted that drinking water supplies can be impacted by activities like mining that occurs close to the water source, as well as some mining activities that may occur miles away. Now, I would like to bring up, and it just dawned on me this week, my wife and I have been having rust come through our water that's stained in our toilets. Now, I've been in this property since 2007, and it's just started six months ago. His mine is north of me on 264. There's also one down toward Pactolus Fire Department that's going on as well. I feel like they've already damaged my water aquifer to where I'm starting to get more iron water coming up in my well for me and my wife to be drinking and my grandkids. Also, I'm hoping you guys got the email that I sent out to you today in lighting of this, talking about the hours of operation. Yes, they set restrictions, but Mr. Brawley stood right up here in the planning board meeting and said, yes, I understand 7 to 7, but if I'm behind on a job, I might go 7, 8, 9 o'clock at night. So if he's saying 7, 8, 9, who's to say he's not gonna do 12, 1 o'clock in the morning? Now, he's, they've got restrictions set again for 7, I think, Monday through Friday. Well, this picture right here proves that his mine that's around his own family was operating on 11/26 of this year on a Sunday afternoon. I heard him operating where my house is, and I went and took this picture on the roadway of them operating. This past Saturday, I was outside in my backyard. I hear trucks running up I hear trucks running up down the road and I hear beating and banging. Lord behold, I go out on the intersection. He is out there again on Saturday afternoon, operating. I have post-traumatic stress disorder. I have sent a copy of the letter with my email address from my doctor. Noise, banging, beating, it terrifies me. I'm a former law enforcement officer. I worked here at Pitt County Sheriff's Office. I was in investigations. And hearing things like gunshots and stuff sets me off. And my anxiety will not be able to handle all this noise for, it's from seven A to seven P, five, six, seven days a week. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard.
One other, can I add one other thing real quick?
Yes, sir.
Anybody that's against this, can I please have them stand up in this room?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking that. That's all we have signed up to speak.
Okay. We will close the public hearing and we'll move on to items for report.
We need a up or down and consistency and public interest.
Okay, I was thinking we were going to do that.
He didn't get a chance to sign up right here.
Okay, come forward. You can come forward.
Tell us his name. Is he able?
If you would give us your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Mark Edwards, 3620 Cattail Lane. I've been doing consulting work for the Brawleys on this, and I'm the one who prepares the mining application that will eventually go, if this goes through, for the state mining permit. So basically, I'm here just to answer any questions you guys may have. One thing I think Mr. Rose did bring out is the neighboring, correct me if I'm wrong, the neighboring mine site, I'm not sure if you stated, but it is actually current. It's not an old site. It's active as well. So any implications that this may or may not have wouldn't be any different than the current site, just literally right next door directly to the west. And also, one thing that I'm not sure if you're aware of, Mr. Rose, is this site is anticipated to only be two to three years, and then they'll be out and then to be over with. That's kind of what I had to offer. Mr. Brawley will have more to say, but if you have any questions about any particulars.
Any questions from Commissioners?
I do for Mr. Rose when it's appropriate, but not for Mr. Deans.
This was the man that said he didn't get a chance to sign up.
I will, I will bring up one other thing as far as the well and water issue is concerned. They will not be de-watering, meaning lowering the water table. There will be a pump, and Mr. Brawley can expand on this, it's used in the cleaning and filtering of the sand, but the water goes right back into the excavation area. So there's no impact on any neighboring wells or septic tanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mr. Brawley, you want to come forward?
Hey, hold on a minute. My name's Joseph Brawley. I stay on 4483 US Highway 264 East, which is just north of the property. Been there, lived there all my life. So I understand their concerns. We're not there to detriment the community or disturb the peace or anything like that. I know there's a question about the time of operation. We agreed to do seven to seven. That's no problem. The water issue, I think Mark addressed that. I think, I forgot his name, but they got out the property with the well to 75 foot from property. I think the regulation is 10 foot from property line. But, you know, we're not here to pump water. We're not here to lower the water table. The noise, there's the existing sand mine operating just west of his property. You can see it from his house. It's been there for 20-some years before he even bought the property. And adjacent to him, he has another RV park that carries on heavy equipment use, filling in an old sand pit hole. So, you know, he knew that when he bought it. The initial owner of his park, as I know him, and I've spoken with him, his name is Austin Powers. He owned it for 22 years. I spoke with him about it, was it be detrimental to his business and whatnot? And he said the existing pit beside him never had any negative effects to his business. He said, matter of fact, most of the problems he had was with the neighboring RV park at the time they were constructing the lots and whatnot. But that's about all I had to say. And any questions from y'all or anybody else, they're free to ask.
Questions for any Commissioners? Okay, thank you, Mr. Brawley.
Yes, sir.
We will officially close the public hearing now. Madam Manager, what do you need for most?
A motion to approve or deny the request, and then following that, a consistency statement and statement of public interest.
Good.
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I ask Mr. Rose a couple of questions?
Yes, sir. Right ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Rose, I just have a couple of questions, follow-up on the proposal. Question on Olback Tollis Road, is that road state maintained?
It is.
It's a state-maintained road? Now, does county planning weigh in? Do you have an opinion on the effect that the planned mining operation would have on the water level or the cleanliness of the active wells on site?
I'm only basing it off of some other sand mines that we've seen where there was de-watering going on, and certainly that does have an impact. It would seem to me that if you're remove, taking water out, replacing it right back on the site, that it's going to have limited, if any, type of effect to the water level. And I'll only speak to that item.
As a part of the current proposal and application, is it a requirement to the conditional rezoning that the applicant actively de-water the site as it's being mined? Is that a part of the application and of the site plan?
No, it's not a requirement, no.
Is that something that our board, as a part of our approval, if we were to approve it, is that a condition that our board could put on this application?
You could, of course. The petitioner would have to agree to that.
Sure.
But yes, you could put that as an active condition.
And I guess the last question has to do with the 100-foot setback that I saw that you outlined on the application currently. But the majority of the site does not have adjoining residences. There are, there do seem to be two. And correct me if I'm wrong, but just looking at the survey map, there appears to be two dwelling sites with lots directly adjacent to, that have property lines that are directly adjacent to the proposed map. Is that correct? Just two dwelling sites?
Correct, to the west, yes.
Would it be within the board's, I guess, discretion to extend that unexcavated barrier a little bit, say, an additional 50 feet to provide an additional buffer to those adjoining parcels?
Yes, that's within your purview.
As a part of the approval, if we were to do it? Okay.
So we could include that in the motion?
So we could include that. So it would be within our authority if we were to grant, grant application? I guess what I'm getting at is that we could mandate that a part of the mining operation, that the sites be actively de-watered and that the water is pumped back in so as to not lower the water level to the active wells?
That there would not be any de-watering of the site?
Correct, correct. So not de-watering, but we, that they would have to go through an engineering process whereby the site was prevented from de-watering the surrounding wells. Is that, that's something that we could do? And then also, we would, it would be within our purview, I guess, on to provide for an additional 50-foot buffer around the adjacent parcels?
Yes.
That satisfies my questions.
I want to ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I think one of the speakers said something about when you take sand out of it, it doesn't change the water table. Is sand is a solid particle, is that correct?
It is.
If you drop anything that's solid into water, the tendency is that the water will rise. If you take it out, then it drops lower because the solid of it, that's the scientific end of removing solids from water that happens. So when you take this, what? So when you take sand out of the ground, the water table is automatically going to I realize that the owner of the property can do what he or she decides to do, but when it impacts the environment, it's concerning for me. And I do know that we need development, and sand is very important. That's the new form of gold over in the area of north of the Tar River. However, there are other needs where people owning land can use it to gain resources. We have a loss, we do not have enough houses. There are enough crops that we need to have. And I'm just talking about, there are other ways you can make money with the land rather than just selling sand. And I'd like to ask you, Mr. Rose, have you looked, is there any study done on sand located in other areas of the county beyond north of the Tar River?
Again, I won't say there's been studies. Certainly, we have soil surveys and other information that's been collected. As we've discussed before, just the lay of the land, especially with these flood-prone areas, that's where the sediment is laid down when there's any flood event and therefore north of the river is a prime area where there's a broad span of flood plain. Those are areas that have a relatively deep layer of sand. So that is why you see those types of facilities going in that area as well as along just north of the Neuse River around Griffin and all, another sandy area.
Whether, when the pits are completely stopped, what you call it, ending, the pumping, the pits are left open, it's an attraction for negative things like trash dumping. And I lived in an area where, I'm going to get to this, I know you all are quick. I've lived on Old River Road the majority of my life, and at some point, we didn't have all the sand, and we didn't have all the trash. So it seems to me something needs to be done about spreading the pumping of sand around in Pitt County rather than just in one area. I'm not at all pleased that this is the only area that we can pump sand. And I know people have their possibility of where they get their land from. And we may not be able to control it because they don't observe that seven to seven, and we've had that before. And when summertime comes, they pump right up till it gets dark. And so what kind of penalty is there for not observing the rules of what the county has set? Because that has been a concern.
Well, first, this would be just like any other zoning violation. There would, we would issue a notice and let the violator know that there is some cause for action. In other words, stop running past those hours of operation that have been, if the board so desires, put those in place. There are fines and penalties that are also available if it persists. So that is our remedy.
Well, when the sand is gone, the land remains there and becomes a problem. We've had children who drown in these sand pits. And I'm very concerned of what we're doing for the future of our environment. And I'm not in support of this, and I don't mind you knowing that because it's not happening too positive. Make it positive in the area. Yes, we do need growth, but we've got to find some way else to handle it. And it's really a problem.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Nunnely. I think he's got another question for you.
Would, would we be able to, I believe the applicant stated that that landmine, as they foresee it once active, would only be open and operate for two to three years. Was that, was that correct? Is that what I?
That's what I've heard, but there are no conditions to that effect.
No conditions. Would that be within our authority as a board to grant the conditional rezoning and to put a sunset on that, on that conditional rezoning?
I'm going to defer to my attorney on that one.
I don't believe so. Commissioner, I believe they would have to come back for another hearing to rezone the property back after the two or three years.
So, but we could put a condition that it would only be active for two to three years?
I believe there would still have to be, you would come back, there would still have to be a public hearing, a vote as to that.
To revert back to rural agricultural only? Okay. And that would applicant-driven, not, not property owner-driven? Is that correct?
I believe the planning department could come back.
You have the authority to initiate it ourselves.
Okay.
Any other? Commissioner McGowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm very concerned about the representatives that we have in this room who have stated that clearly that they don't want this mine in that area, especially Whispering Oaks, RV Resort. Seem to be, it's a place that people come to have a quiet time. You heard the officer who serves our county and city, that this has affected him tremendously. He's suffering from a situation that no one's bothered him. You also heard from people that, and he also mentioned about the water. He noticed that there's been a difference in the element of the water taste since he's been there. As a representative of these individuals, I certainly think that this should be denied, and I'm certainly not supporting this.
Thank you, Commissioner McGowan. Any other comments or questions? It was a pleasure to board.
I made a motion that we deny this request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the request. Let's cast our vote.
We don't have the thing to do here.
We need to, we need to go back. Okay, here we go. You got it.
I think I pressed the wrong button. I pressed the wrong button.
Okay.
Okay, so it was unanimous?
And Chairman, we will still need, because our ordinance as well as the statute says, even when rejecting it, you still need a motion either adopting the consistency statement and saying that it's unreasonable or saying it's inconsistent with the land use plan and unreasonable, but some sort of motion to that extent.
Okay, do we hear a motion for that?
I'll make the motion that the, I move that we adopt the consistency statement, that it is consistent as recommended by the planning board. However, that the board finds that it is not, after hearing the evidence, it is not in the best interest, public's interest, to approve the application of that.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Cast your vote, please. And that passed unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to items for report. Tax Administration Collection Report for November 23. Mr. Hill?
Good evening, Chairman Smith, Commissioners and Manager Gallagher. This evening, I bring to you the November 2023 Collection Report. The Pitt County Fiscal Year to Date, July 1, 2023 through December The Pitt County Fiscal Year to Date, July 1st, 2023 through December, I'm sorry, through November 30th, 2023, Combined Collection Rate for Real and Personal Property was 67.71%. The combined rate one year ago for personal and real property was 68.69%. Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary remedies available through the North Carolina General Statutes. If there are no questions, it's my recommendation to approve the November 2023 Tax Collection Report.
As presented. So moved as presented.
Got a motion and a second. Would cast your vote, Mr. Hill?
Thank you.
Commissioner Huggins? All right, passed unanimously. And I think Commissioner Ward, you need to.
Yes, I need to leave. And I was waiting until we got this settled. So I ask permission.
Motion, motion to excuse Commissioner Ward.
Got a motion and a second to excuse Commissioner Ward.
Sorry.
Thank you.
We're gonna let you go.
Thank you very much. Just bring you all behave now while I'm gone.
Not, not likely.
Okay, we'll move on to the next report. Monthly Financial Report for the General Fund, Solid Waste Enterprise Fund and EMS Fund as of November 30th. Sam?
Good evening, Chairman Smith, Commissioners, Manager Gallagher. Tonight, I bring you the November 2023 Financial Report for the General Fund, Solid Waste Fund and EMS Fund. We are five months into the fiscal year at this point, or 41.7%. For the General Fund, we have collected 47.4% of anticipated revenues and spent 37.4% of budgeted expenditures. Solid Waste, we have collected 59.9% and spent 33.6%. EMS, we have collected 53.7% and spent 41.6%. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, it's my recommendation for a motion to approve the monthly finance report.
Motion made and supported.
Got a motion here, second?
Second.
A second. Cast your vote, please. Okay, unanimous. And Sammy, you've got the next one as well.
My second item for report tonight is a good news item. Pitt County received the Government Finance Officers Association Award for our popular annual finance report or financial report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. This is a copy of the report that we put together. And what it is, this is awards recognized Pitt County's efforts in extracting information from our annual comprehensive finance report and publishing it in an easy and accessible, readable, understandable and transparent report for the general public and other parties that do not have the background in public finance. This is our eighth consecutive year that Pitt County has received this award. I want to recognize the efforts of Pitt County's Financial Services Team for their work in achieving this award. And also especially to Kelly Dixon, who's here with us tonight for preparing this award-winning publication. There is no motion for the board. This is an item for report only. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Congratulations. All right, we'll move on to the Madam Manager and her report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item of your next meeting dates. We have one regular meeting in January on the 8th at 6:00 PM in this room, followed by on January 22nd at 8:30 in the morning, your Capitol Budgeting Workshop. And then your first meeting in February is on the 5th at 6:00 PM in this room. The second item I have is to recognize that today, December 18th, is the actual day of Bethel's 150th Anniversary. And if those, I see Mayor Wilson here. If anyone else is with you from Bethel, please stand. Just you, thank you so much for being here this evening. And I just wanted to share.
Bethel's High School in Bethel.
On this anniversary date, I just wanted to share some brief facts. It's located in northern Pitt County. Bethel is a quaint town, home to a population of about 1,381 residents. It covers just over one square mile. Its origins trace back to the late 1700s when two thoroughfares in eastern North Carolina intersected, forming a crossroads known as Bethel. A church was built and a thriving community grew around it. The town briefly changed its name to Brandon before switching back to Bethel upon its incorporation 150 years ago on this day. Bethel was the site of the first railroad in Pitt County. And folks from the surrounding towns came to Bethel to catch a train, leading to, leading to an economic and population boom. Today, the town is known for its old time charm and small town feel. And so we are grateful to have Bethel as one of our 10 municipalities in Pitt County. And we congratulate you, Mr. Wilson, and your entire team on your 150th Anniversary.
Thank you, County Manager Gallagher. I am very pleased to hear that positive note about the only municipality in the second district.
The next item I have is an update on your holiday safety fair. I just want to send a shout out of thanks and appreciation to Randy Gentry, your Emergency Management Director and his team for a very successful holiday safety fair that occurred on December 7th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at Alice Keane Park. There were donations made for new unwrapped toys that day. It was a free family event that featured D.H. Conley's Jazz Band, helicopters, touch a truck, home heating and cooking safety information, food vendors, crafts, art projects, deputy drifter from our sheriff's office, Pitt County Animal Services with a petting zoo, and a photo opportunity for Santa in his Santa ambulance, Santa ambulance. So this was a wonderful tradition that has been started by our emergency management folks. And I just want to report back to the board that it was a successful event this year. Next, I want to recognize some of our team members who received Pitt County's Eat Smart, Move More Award titled Champions by the Eat Smart, Move More North Carolina Board. Wes Gray, our Health Director, Alice Keane, Eli Johnson and Allison Swart were all recognized on November 16th at the McKimmon Center at the North Carolina State University. They were recognized for their support that our community has had in providing equitable opportunities every day and everywhere for healthy eating and active living that leads to healthy behaviors. Some of the efforts that were recognized in this award were our trails and fitness playgrounds, the fact that Pitt County had the first joint use of school facilities policies in the state of North Carolina, that Pitt County has adopted a healthy food policy, that we had the first countywide community garden adjacent to the Pitt County District Park. And through Community Putting Prevention to Work Grant, this team worked with communities of faith, businesses, schools, parks and recreation, East Carolina University Family Medicine and not-for-profit organizations to develop healthy eating and physical activity best practices that continue to impact the lives of our residents every day. Their mantra is the healthy choice is the easy choice. And I was so proud to see that they received this recognition this month.
Thank you all.
Next, your county offices. Just for a reminder to the public, the county offices are closed for the holidays, December 25th to the 27th, and again on January 1st for New Year's Day. Next item, your chairman's appointments. At your second meeting in December of each year, your chairman makes his appointments and those are placed out in front of you for your information. And then finally, as a follow-up to one of your, to your first meeting in November, Commissioner Melvin McGlone asked me to follow up on a meeting with Dr. Gary Moore of the Bethel Youth Center. He had initiated a funding request. And at that time, Commissioner McGlone asked that I follow up and bring back information to the board. So on November 16th, I did in fact meet with Dr. Gary Moore, talked about his youth center, and he presented me information and data along with his funding request for $150,000. He would like to make a presentation to this board. If the board is so inclined to hear that, I can set that presentation at a future meeting. Once you hear that, it would be my recommendation that we consider any funding that the board is inclined to do in the next fiscal year's budget. But it's up to the board this evening if you would like me to schedule further presentation from Dr. Gary Moore.
It was a pleasure to board.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion here, second? And this is to, to set up a presentation?
Set up a presentation.
Okay. Did I hear a second?
Yeah.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Cast your vote. Okay, we'll move forward with scheduling that presentation.
Thank you, and that's all that I have for my report.
Thank you, Madam Manager. We'll move on to items for consent.
Mr. Chairman.
Move to approve.
Or second.
Got a motion and a second to approve items for consent. Waiting on the vote for the items for consent. Unanimously approved. We'll move on to items for decision. Pitt Solar, I'll ask on Mr. Rhodes, step back up.
Okay, most of you are familiar with this particular item. It has been before you a few times before. This is for a solar farm that is straddling the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the town of Bethel and our planting jurisdiction in the county. It's about two thirds within the ETJ and a third out in our jurisdiction. We've taken several different actions on this. It started back before we had our conditional district rezonings. This is actually a special use or conditional use permit that was handled. You may recall, some of you that were on the board, we met in special session out at the Ag Center at the time to approve this particular request for solar farm. Since that time, there have been a number of extensions. The way the ordinance reads, if there's not substantial, and that's graded by a 10% improvement of the site based off the site plan. If that is not yet done, it's not a fully vested plan and it has to come back before you for consideration of an extension. So the main issue with this, and you may have caught wind of it also when we dealt with the Griffin Solar Farm. Duke Energy is the electrical provider in those areas. And the transmission line that's required to tie back in these facilities needs an upgrade. And until that line is upgraded, in turn, these particular new sites cannot come online and be constructed. So with that, just to orient you, just a little bit about the exact locations. Most of the site, again, is within the town of Bethel's ETJ. This is the NC 11 bypass around Bethel, Bethel corporate limits in pink. So Sun Energy sits right there at the intersection of NC 30 and NC 11. So you can see some of these hatch properties that would be included or have been included in this facility. Your criteria for consideration of an extension. Number one, has the permit expired yet? This one has not. Has the permit recipient proceeded in due diligence and in good faith? Staff believes they have. They are simply waiting. They keep in constant contact with us about this and they are still waiting on Duke Energy's improvements. And the conditions have not changed substantially. And they have not for this type of facility. So you do have the option tonight to grant another six-month extension that would then run until July the 11th. The current permit runs till January the 11th of 2024. And our recommendation is for approval of that six-month extension. Welcome any questions.
Commissioner Nunnely?
Motion to approve the extension.
I have a question.
What question?
I'm in Bethel area quite often. And the weeds and the grass and everything is very unsightly right next to that residential area as well as the cemetery. It seems to me that it can look better. And when you were entering that area, it does not have a positive effect on you when you see it going in. So I, I, yes, the, the solar panels are up, but it needs to.
That is another site. That is not the one we're continuing with tonight.
Which one is it then?
This is one that has yet to be constructed.
Oh, Lord.
Okay, we had a motion from Commissioner Nunnely. Do I hear a second? Got a second from Commissioner Hallman. Cast your vote, please.
What was it? What was the motion?
To approve the extension.
Thank you.
Motion carried. All right, second item is termination of the grant award agreement with the town of Bethel, the budget amendment and financial services. That's a refund from the town of Bethel and that's Matt and Sam.
Good evening again. Matt Gibson and I bring you an item for decision and a termination of the grant award agreement and a budget amendment for $32,500 from the town of Bethel. On May 2nd, 2006, Pitt County and the town of Bethel entered into a 20-year agreement to construct a 12-inch water line with the county providing $32,500 per year. In fiscal year 2022, the town sold the water line to GUC, resulting in the town becoming debt-free. The county and town desire to terminate the original agreement, which will release the county from our $32,500 per year obligation for the remainder of the 20-year agreement. The termination agreement is your attachment to in your pocket. In addition, the town of Bethel returned the 24 payment for $32,500. Financial Services audit this payment. Also, Pitt County Legal, Financial Services and the town worked together in Bethel returning the 2023 payment of $32,500. I recommend a motion to authorize the chair to sign the termination of the grant award agreement and approve the budget amendment to recognize $32,500 refund from the town of Bethel.
Move approval.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second for approval. Would cast your vote? And that was unanimous. Thank you, Sam and Matt. Move on to the Pitt Community College Welding and Building Project.
My second item for decision tonight, I bring you an update on the Pitt Community College Welding Building Project. The financing and debt market conditions are updated. A quick overview of the project. The new welding building will have an estimated 30,000 square feet. The building will feature 72 welding booths capable of welding many different types of metals. Also, the new building will have a structural steel fabrication lab, a pipe fabrication lab and a robotics welding lab. And it's Pitt County's intent to finance the construction of this building. Just to give you some familiarity of where this building would be located. It's going to be located on the northwestern part of the campus. This is going to be adjacent to the baseball field off of Ready Branch Road. On May 7th, 2022, the board authorized staff to explore a bank installment financing for the new welding building and asked staff to monitor debt market conditions. Tonight, I'm providing an update on current market conditions and seeking guidance on how to proceed with the financing of the new welding building. As of December 4th, 2023, Amy Venter with First Financial Advisors provided the following comparison between the bank installment financing and limited obligation bond with an estimated $17 million borrowing. The limited obligation bond will have a cost issuance and other fees of $376,300. All-in interest rate will be 3.82%. Total debt service will be $21,308,253. Or it'd be $661,848 less than a bank installment loan. For the bank installment loan, it has a cost of issuance of $150,000, an all-in interest rate of 4.39%. rate of 4.39%, and a total debt service of $20,970,100, and this is $661,848 less, excuse me, higher than the limited obligation bonds financing. Your next slide is the amortization of both projects with the principal and the interest of the debt service and the yearly payments, and at the bottom right, you will see the savings or the difference of $661,848 if the board selects using limited obligation bonds. Tonight, staff is seeking guidance from the board on financing the Pitt Community College Welding and Building Project based on current debt market conditions and the potential savings of $661,848 by changing to the limited obligation bonds as our source of financing. If the board approves the authorization of county staff to explore limited obligation bonds, then I am recommending a motion for the board to authorize county staff to prepare and sign the necessary documents to prepare the public sale of limited obligation bonds for the financing calendar, which is your attachment to in your pocket. I'm happy to take any questions or answer any questions that you may have.
I'd like to ask you, wasn't there a typo error in this that it's not 2024?
Correct, it's 2023.
It's December 23. With that changes, I'd like to offer, support the motion to take the recommendation, accept the recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with that change. You have a second. Questions?
What specific buildings will be encumbered by the limited obligation bond?
Just the welding building itself.
Just the building itself.
And the land that it sits on.
All right.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we cast your vote?
Preparing.
Okay, it's approved unanimously. We will move to the next item, Request for Distribution of NCDPI Public School Building Renovation and Repair Fund to Pitt County Schools. Aaron Erickson?
Yep, I'm happy to and privileged to introduce Aaron Erickson with the executive, he's the Executive Director of Operations for Pitt County Schools, and I turn it over for Eric for his presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are seeking permission to have a distribution from the lottery funds that the state has set aside under the Public School Building Renovation and Repair Fund. The state created these funds in the 2122 fiscal year, and there was a smaller amount set aside that year, and then last year's distribution and this year's distribution put us at a total before interest of 1.3 million that is currently sitting in that fund designated for Pitt County schools, and we are seeking permission to apply those funds towards repairs needed to create a uplift structural protection for the gymnasiums at Aiden Middle, Farval Middle, and Welcome Middle. I welcome any questions on that item.
Might be a motion to approve.
We got a motion to approve here, a second.
This is the first time we ever got some lottery funds for the school. That's what it hit me with.
Got a second. Okay, have a motion and a second. Cast your vote. Unanimously approved. Well, Eric, you have the next one as well. Aaron, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. The next item is the Needs-Based Public School Building Capital Fund. This is a grant that we can apply for with the state that would allow us to fund several projects that are needed throughout the school system. If funded based on where the state has assessed the local match for us, which is currently 15%, we would be able to complete projects at Aiden Elementary for a classroom addition, Belvoir for a renovation, Creekside for an addition, Eastern Elementary for an addition, Almhurst for additions as well as security upgrades, Ridgewood for an addition, South Greenville is applied for for additions to the media center and kitchen as well as renovation, and Robinson is also applied for for a small classroom addition, and then Wintergreen is applied for for a larger classroom addition. The purpose of these projects would be to bring us into compliance with the K2 classroom sizes. It also would be in our interest if this funding did come through, and we do apply for these singularly, so each project is applied for separately. We would be greatly surprised if the funding came through for all the projects. We would more than likely see one or two of these grants approved, but if the funding was to come through for everything that was requested, we would be needing a match from the county total around $13 million, although that is extremely unlikely because this will be the fourth time we've applied for these and we have not had one approved yet, so.
I'd like to move approve. I tell you, Belvoir needs it seriously.
Okay, yes ma'am.
Mr. Chair. You not expecting all of these grants to come through?
No, ma'am.
So if you don't, if you get maybe one or two of them, how will you use that money?
So the state will actually approve the individual projects, so they will make the selection for us.
Okay, so you will have to use it for that individual project?
Correct.
That's approved?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? We have a motion here, a second. Motion and a second. If you would, cast your vote. Unanimously passed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is Appointment to the Pitt County Farm and Food Council.
And your nomination procedures, Mr. Chair, are contained within your agenda package. It's being recommended that this board nominate Ms. Dee Dinsdale to the Pitt County Farm and Food Council as the at-large representative with term expiring July 1, 2026, and you'll note the provisions for nominations within your package to assure consistency with the process set forth in your board appointment policy.
It was a pleasure, the board.
Move to approve.
Have a motion and a second. Please vote. Okay, it's unanimous, and then we'll move on to the reappointments for Juvenile Crime Prevention.
And this is a longer list for reappointments, and it is being recommended that this board nominate for reappointment Javon Thompson, Mike Taylor, Sharon Rochelle, Desha Lane, Christopher Burek, Kimberly Melvin, James Tripp, Wendy Hazelton, and Susan Hall. If nominated for reappointment, all but Mike Taylor would serve a term that expires December 31st, 2026, and Mr. Taylor's would expire December 31st, 2024, if the board would so nominate.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second, if you would, cast your vote. Okay, that's unanimous. We'll move on to Commissioner comments. I'll start with the question. No comment? Commissioner Nunnely?
No comment.
Commissioner?
Merry Christmas.
Yes.
Merry Christmas to everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Commissioner McLaughlin, did you have something?
No, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to all. Do I hear a motion to go into closed session?
So move.
Mr. Chair, I may state that.
Okay. Sorry.
It's been suggested this body go into closed session under the following grounds: one, to discuss the personnel matter under North Carolina General Statute 14331811A6; and two, to prevent disclosure of information that is not considered a public record under North Carolina General Statute 14331810.
Thank you, Matt. Have a motion go into closed session.
I guess we vote now.
Got a motion and a second. Okay, we are back in session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to move that we approve the closed session minutes of December 4th, 2023.
We have a motion here, a second. A second to approve those minutes. Cast your vote, please. Unanimously approved.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we adjourn.
Okay, we got a motion to adjourn and a second. All those in favor, cast your vote. Don't make anybody say no to that. We're done.